I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Mrs. Riska, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Yanez.
Here.
And Ms. Sarko.
Present.
Thank you. Council, we need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vander.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to start out with just a recap of Sterling Fest. For those of you who were not there, you missed probably one of the best Sterling Fest ever, but you probably were there because we had record-breaking crowds the entire three days. The weather was fabulous. The fireworks were great, and it truly was a wonderful event. And it's easy to see why it's continued to be rated one of the best festivals in southeastern Michigan. And it's impossible to thank everyone without omitting someone, but from the mayor, the city council members, to employees and volunteers, there's a tremendous sense of collective pride in making Sterling Fest the best festival around. There's hundreds, literally hundreds, of people that helped put this together, from employees to volunteers and so many others, including the vendors and sponsors that are involved in the event. So on behalf of, once again, the mayor, the city council, myself, I want to thank everyone that did work so hard to put it together, and it went off flawlessly. And I'd like to thank them for all their good work. So we look forward to next year's Sterling Fest. We've already met and started planning for next year. There's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into just the planning alone, so I'll look forward to Sterling Fest next year. And if you don't mind, I'd like to draw your attention to the screen, because speaking of planning, it's never too early to start preparations for winter. And before you know it, it's going to be here unfortunately. And we're super excited because just this week, we took delivery of one of our latest additions to our snowplow fleet. And of our 23 large snowplow trucks, eight have been purchased within the last five years, so we're trying to do the best we can to get the entire fleet up to state-of-the-art condition. And you can see with the new apparatus we're purchasing, you know, this is the latest and greatest. We will have this all ready to go for snow flying and hopefully not till December or January. But I wanted to mention that the residents can rest assured that we're doing all that we can to get prepared for unfortunately what's to come next. On a more pleasant topic, I wanted to mention tomorrow, Wednesday, we are going to have the Macomb County Clerk and Register of Deeds Mobile Office at our senior center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And featured services include CPL applications or renewals, marriage license applications, business registrations, copies of birth and death certificates, marriage or business records, notary application, voter registration, voter photo ID, and much more. So again, if you're able and you need to get any of those documents updated, you can go to our senior center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. tomorrow. And Mayor, we've had some inquiries of recent about a development on Shaner and Moravian, which was scheduled to be a Tim Hortons and related retail, a commercial center, if you will. And many have noticed that the project has been stalled for well over a year now. We've been informed by the owner that the project will be completed. They're starting up work again. You can see that the site has been tidied up. It's something that the city required. The sidewalk gap on Shaner has been replaced, and the site preparation work has once again commenced. All the brick is on-site. They expect to begin the masonry work later this week and into next week. And all the exterior sidewalks and exterior site improvements and rest of the build-out and so on will continue through the construction season, with the project being wrapped up, including landscaping, September, October-ish. That's the latest schedule from the owner themselves, so I wanted to make sure the community knew that the project is going to be completed. We do not have confirmation of the final tenants yet at the commercial center, but you can look forward to the work being completed. An important component of that project is the intersection being improved at Shaner and Moravian with left-hand turn lanes and vastly improving some of the traffic flow patterns there. That'll be the last component of the project. Moving on, I'm really pleased to announce that the City of Sterling Heights Plan Review Coordinator Frank Bayer was recently appointed to the State Construction Code Commission to represent municipal building inspectors for a term expiring in January 2023. The State Construction Code Commission hears building code appeals made by state or municipal plan reviewers and inspectors. So this is quite an honor. This is an appointment that comes from the governor, and I think it's incredibly gratifying to have our employees appointed to such prestigious positions across the state. And it's rewarding to know that the expertise and knowledge of our city employees are recognized by individuals, in this case, not just by the governor, but by other state associations and national associations as well. It's really a reflection of the outstanding individuals employed by the City of Sterling Heights and the good work they do every day. So I wanted to congratulate Frank Bayer and his good work in being appointed to this commission by the governor. And many of you noticed, walking in or driving into City Hall this evening, the construction work that's going on in front of the entrance. We're replacing all the concrete work, the steps, making them a little more pedestrian-friendly, putting in a handicap-accessible ramp that meets today's handicap accessibility code requirements, and improving the retention wall that used to be there, and so on. So this construction work will be ongoing for approximately five weeks, and then we'll be moving over the contract. We'll be doing this similar type work between the City Hall and police station. That entire plaza concrete area will be torn out. As you know, the concrete is deteriorating significantly there. All of this work will be finished up this construction season, at least on the exterior of this facility. And speaking of construction, we are nearing the end of the recreating recreation build-out with so many exciting projects that have been completed over the past few years since the initiative was approved by the voters. We thought it'd be really helpful to have our Parks and Recreation Director Kyle Langlois provide an update on where we're at with the remaining projects. So Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd like to introduce Kyle Langlois to share with us the latest project progress.
Mr. Langlois.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and all gathered here this evening. As requested, I'm here today in order to give a brief update on just where we're at and where we stand with recreating recreation as we kind of race towards the finish line of our build-out, which was a three-year time period as we pledged to our residents. So over the past two and a half years, we've been feverish. We've been completing a number of great projects, including park renovations. This here is the most recent update, which is pickleball courts at College Park. Also completed the reconstruction of Dodge Park, and of course, very popular skate park on City Center Campus, and that's just to name a few. While a lot of our completed projects have, you know, been very well documented, I really wanted to spend some time focusing on the work that is currently in progress and what is yet to come. First project I would like to focus on is the community center, and our crews are working six days a week right now to try and complete this building as quickly as possible. Many areas are being completed, giving us a great look at what the exterior finished product will be. On the inside, framing has taken place, as well as underground utilities, stairwells, and even concrete for the gymnasiums has already been poured. Again, things are starting to take shape, and we can really start to see what the blueprints and the renderings look like as they come to life. Unfortunately, the extreme cold this past winter and the historic rainfalls of May and June have pushed back our originally scheduled opening date of December 2019. But we are going to continue to try and make up ground along the way so we can open up our doors February 2020. Assuming weather cooperates the rest of the way, our goal is to host the 2020 cultural exchange at the new center. Also underway is the restroom buildings in all of our parks. To date, four of the five buildings have been completed and are back open. What a difference that work has made. Better lighting, new roofs, new partitions and toilets, as well as permanent site amenities, are what has transformed these areas into spaces that our residents and park patrons deserve. The Delia Park restroom building that supports the soccer and football fields to the north of the park is the last building to be completed, which we plan to have done within the next month. In addition, tonight's consent agenda includes the purchase of site amenities, which will finish outfitting the rest of our pavilions with the permanent picnic tables and garbage cans that have become our department's standard. Upon order, those will be delivered and installed by mid-September, but until that time comes, we will have our older wood-style picnic tables and metal garbage cans in place until that time. Just wanted to show a couple before and after photos. This is the before picture of what Farmstead Park restroom and pavilion look like, and this is what it looks like now, with the exception of the doors have been replaced since this picture was taken. But you can see very nice fresh coat of paint, new concrete all around, new drinking fountain and a new roof. Better picture of the roof and the side. You can see from the side angle, as you can see, we've taken the picnic tables out. We put in newly kind of reconditioned picnic tables that we had that we used for Sterling Fest, as well as some new garbage cans. So even if you went there today, it would look a little bit different than what you see right now. Next picture is Nelson Park. This is what it looked like after we tore out the old toilets and partitions and everything off the walls. You can see it's pretty dark, and this is what it looks like, the same restroom today. So new partitions, new toilets, the hand dryer that's consistent with our park restrooms now, as well as a baby changing station. Combined with the restroom project is the renovations within Delia Park, which include reconstructing asphalt pathways, improving drainage around buildings, installing lights on the tennis courts, which are partially done at this point, and constructing our first-ever cricket pitch and dog park. What you see in front of you today is an aerial shot of the dog park area, which is kind of our first real look at what the dog park's going to look like. The area to the right, which is more of the rectangle area, is the main dog area. That's about 1.25 acres. And the area to the left, which is more of the oval shape, that's for small dogs, that's 0.75 acres. What's neat about this overhead view is all the trees that you see inside that kind of dog park area, those trees were originally meant to be eliminated from the area. We were able to go through and save about two dozen trees in that area, which we're happy to do. Not only does it create some shady areas, but also provides some aesthetic quality and some natural beauty to this area as well. Still plenty of room for dogs to roam free without their leash, but we'll have some trees as well, which is generally uncommon in dog park areas. Also as part of this project is the installation of the vault-style restroom by the dog park and tennis courts to serve those patrons. Due to the timing of the vault-style restroom installation, which will be late October, we will likely be looking at a late-fall completion of this project in its entirety, since we can't provide electrical to any of the areas that need electrical, which would be the tennis court lights, the dog park entrance gate, and so on and so forth, need electricity. We can't do that until the building gets put in, which again, we expect late October. Third project tied to Delia Park is the nature trail that begins at Delia and will go to the nature preserve in Beaumont Hospital's property. Final permits are being buttoned up with the county, as well as the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle, as we know, and our chosen contractor, LaSalle, will be beginning to mobilize in just a couple weeks. As discussed at length in the past couple of months, this project is set to be completed by the end of the construction season, which again, we expect to be in November. Lastly today, I would like to briefly update everyone on the final phase of our park reconstruction plan, which includes Nelson, Farmstead, Carpathia, Magnolia, Moravian, Mark Sawyer's family, North Clinton River, and Rotary Parks. Each park will receive various levels of improvements to finish off the project, but the two main projects to be highlighted tonight are the connecting path from the subdivision to the southeast of Moravian Park, as well as the completion of the walkway connecting Rotary Park to our universally accessible paddle landing. The path at Moravian Park has been a hot-button issue for some time, and I'm happy to say that this will be checked off our list in just a couple months. If you're looking at the screen in front of you, it is the yellow highlighted section of that drawing. That's the path that we're speaking of that connects the subdivision into Moravian Park. Equally as important is finally getting a delineated hard-surfaced path to the paddle landing at Rotary Park. The landings were installed late last fall, and while there is a path available to link the park to the landing, it has caused some confusion for our residents and river users. This new path will be hard-surfaced, universally accessible, and meet the requirements of Eagle, while also clearly establishing the direct pedestrian route to the river and paddle landing. Solicitation for this final phase of park improvement projects is currently out to bid right now with the closing date of August 13th. Again, we expect that this project will be completed late fall as well. As you can see, pretty much everything is wrapping up here, November of this year. Circling back around on some of the confusion from the private canoe and kayak and community, as well as I know, city council and Parks and Recreation and administration has received a lot of comments on social media and by phone, I wanted to share a couple pieces of information that I thought would be beneficial to the landing that we do have at Rotary Park, to hopefully make things easier for everybody. As I showed a bit earlier in the picture with the landing, but more evident in this picture, one of the first common misconceptions that we have is that the new landing is not on city property, that it's not in Rotary Park. It is actually untrue. As you can see in the picture, it is placed in Rotary Park in the green area, which is delineated as park property. The area just to the left of that red mark, red box, that is the area that is owned by Clinton River Canoe and Kayak, and that is, of course, very adjacent, very much so adjacent to the new landing spot. Also, the only vehicle access to this landing is through the private property of Clinton River Canoe and Kayak. One thing I also want to note is that our plan never included vehicle access to canoe and kayak landing spot. It was always going to be a pedestrian walk that would get people to and from the landing, back to their vehicles in the parking lot. So right now, we're sticking with that commonality from the original plan to what is now. That being said, the city and Clinton River Canoe and Kayak have already forged a very mutually beneficial public-private partnership in the short time that the river has been open. Wanted to just kind of share a couple of those items for everybody to review. Right now, Clinton River Canoe and Kayak is responsible for keeping the Clinton River free of trash. Just today, we hauled off a couple trailerfuls of tires and other debris from the river that were pulled out by Clinton River Canoe and Kayak. They do that on a daily basis and a weekly basis. They also are responsible for keeping the Clinton River traversable. That is, cutting trees, making sure that canoes and kayaks can get through without any obstruction. And then also, they're responsible for installing and removing the launches and landing docks annually. So we work with this company. It's a great way to save city resources by utilizing a private company to assist us with these tasks, and right now, Clinton River Canoe and Kayak is doing that for us. Just today, literally at probably 3:30, 4 o'clock today, we had the opportunity to talk to Clinton River Canoe and Kayak, as we have over the past couple weeks, and we were able to come up with a nice agreement for our residents only, and that is that private boaters who are Sterling Heights residents can park in the Clinton River Canoe and Kayak private lot at no charge. So that will be available to Sterling Heights residents with proper photo ID. One thing to note is that those gates close at 7:00 p.m., so if there is anybody who's wishing to stay on the river past 7:00 p.m., they probably want to park in Rotary Park at that point, otherwise their vehicles will be locked in. Also, private boaters who are Sterling Heights residents can load their vessels at the landing. So that was something that has changed today. They can pull right up to the landing spot and get that vehicle access that they require to easily load their vessel back onto their car. Sterling Heights residents can now do that at, again, no charge to the resident. I want to make sure that I mention that, you know, this is a true sign of good faith by Clinton River Canoe and Kayak. This is something that they did not have to do. They value the partnership between the city and them, and they value the residents of Sterling Heights. They chose to invest in property close to our landing spot and continue to serve our residents and enhance service delivery to our residents like we expect. Do want to also mention on the slide I have down there, too, there is still a $5 fee that would be in place for some specific instances using that livery and the landing. One would be if anybody chooses to use the shuttle bus service from Clinton River Canoe and Kayak's property to a spot upstream, whether they're going to Heritage Park or North Clinton River Park, there would be a $5 fee. Basically, if you're going to get on the bus and go upstream, there will be a $5 fee per person, whether residents or non-residents. And then non-residents parking in the Clinton River Canoe and Kayak lot that have private boats, they would be assessed a $5 fee. And any non-residents that would want to take advantage of loading their vessel close to the landing would also be responsible for a $5 fee, which is reasonable considering they are a public, or I'm sorry, a private entity. So great news for Sterling Heights residents, great continued partnership with Clinton River Canoe and Kayak. We're happy that we've been able to make some progress on that, making sure that our river remains traversable, making sure that our river remains accessible for those who want to use it. So hopefully that clears up some of the concern that we have from our residents, and I always invite you to share our information, Parks and Recreation. I'm happy to talk through any of those issues that any of the private boating community might have. In closing today, the next five months, as I said, will be key to finishing the vast majority of our remaining projects, with just a couple that will linger over into 2020. The goal of completing the build-out in three years was ambitious. I've been saying that all along, and I'm very proud to say that we will have delivered results that our residents can touch, feel, enjoy, and appreciate. It's been great being part of this amazing transformation, and based on the noticeable increase that I know a lot of you have seen in our parks since we started this project, it truly has been confirmed just how important parks, recreation, and quality of life is in Sterling Heights. At this point, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Vanderpool.
And Mayor, I just would be remiss if I didn't thank, once again, Kyle Langlois for his outstanding leadership through this entire project over the past three years. He and his entire team have really done a remarkable job bringing all these projects to fruition, and we can't wait to have the 2020 cultural exchange program in the new community center just across the street. It's going to be really awesome. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. You know, before we move on, we have Mr. Langlois here. I'd open it up if there are any council members who have any questions or clarifications they want on any of the Parks and Recreation initiatives, anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Through the chair, I guess, to Mr. Langlois and Mr. Vanderpool. A few meetings ago, Councilman Kosky suggested possibly approaching IGT about pedestrian crossing over the Clinton River at.
Klineau, thank you.
Klineau Road. I wonder if he had an update on that at all, or if we've even started to explore it.
Mr. Langlois.
Councilman Radke, at this point, we have not looked into that. That's something that, as we continue to progress through, it'll be a topic, maybe even for strategic planning, that we'd probably like to report back on and see if there's some traction at that point. Gives us a few months to get in touch with the real estate wing of ITC to see if that's something they would be amenable to.
Mr. Vanderpool, anything to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, I wanted to also update you, and I haven't had a chance to share this with Kyle yet, but I had a conversation with Councilwoman Kosky yesterday, and we went and reviewed this topic in some detail. The challenge with the pedestrian bridge over Klineau is that it is crossing ITC right-of-way, and unfortunately, at this time, they've rejected our past request to install a pedestrian bridge over there, simply because they don't want structures in their clear zone for any sort of arcing or anything that could happen. Now, we used to have a full vehicular bridge that went across there, but that was well before some of their new standards and procedures. Now, that's not to say that they won't relax that, and you know, with additional requests and maybe some pressure renewed effort from the city, maybe they'd be a little more willing now to reconsider, especially in light of our non-motorized transportation plan. So we're not giving up. We'll renew our effort, and we'll see where it takes us. And as Kyle mentioned, we certainly hope to have a more meaningful update at strategic planning this year.
Excellent. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Council, anyone else? If not, just quickly on Rotary Park, can you tell me what the status is of the pathway that's been discussed that's going to link the current launch site to Rotary Park, and what residents can expect out of that?
Yeah, I briefly put the picture up here. I brought it back up, if you want to bring it up on the screen, too. It's part of this last round of neighborhood, or last round of park improvement bids that's out right now, something that we'd be looking for. It would be a 10-foot-wide concrete path that would link up from Rotary Park parking lot to the landing spot. So again, that's where we gain our universal accessibility at that point. It would be, it would fit all the requirements of putting something like this in a floodplain, so we don't have anything to worry about that. And we hope that, being that this is a, again, another hot issue that I expect, this is going to be a project that we are going to get on the, you know, get on right away as soon as we get a contractor on board. So with bids coming in August 13th, I expect probably by mid-September, we'll be able to start, you know, that last phase of projects, which would include this path.
Okay. Thank you for that, and I appreciate the update on the resolution with Clinton River Kayak and Canoe. It's a great resolution, I think, for our residents, and there was a lot of confusion over the past several weeks about what was going on there, and you know, who owned that launch, and why did we pay for it if it was on there? So I'm happy for the clarification today. One thing that's come up a few times that I just want you to clarify, that I've done my best to address with residents, is Clinton River Kayak and Canoe, that company is a reputable company. They're licensed, or they're at least insured. They have the right to operate on the river. They're not some fly-by-night company. When you get on their shuttles, I mean, they're, I'm sure bonded and insured and reputable, and they have every authority from the state of Michigan, from the City of Sterling Heights. Can you just address those concerns? Because some residents were wondering, you know, what is this? Is this just some, is somebody that pulled up and is trying to hustle us for money? So can you kind of speak to that and address those concerns that residents have posed to me?
Yeah, sure. Clinton River Canoe and Kayak has been operating for a long time. I can't sit here and tell you. can't sit here and tell you how long that they've been operating for, but they've been operating in the city of Utica for much longer than they've been working with the city of Sterling Heights, continue to operate in Utica. They've, they've run, I'll call them river expeditions all the way from Yates Cider Mill on down. They're very familiar with the river. They have a, a true vested interest in, in keeping the river nice. And they've been a huge part in making the river what it is today. Like I said, the, the pile of trash that got pulled out not that long ago that they piled on their property for us to remove, they care about the river. Certainly, they have a vested interest because that's their livelihood as well. But they are licensed, and that's one of the reasons why they did take the, I guess, the stance on the policies and procedures that they have with parking and vehicles pulling up onto their property because they are insured, and they want to make sure that their insurance covers what's happening on their property. So, they have a, a concern about that. They want to make sure that they're doing things right by their business model first and foremost, but also, they recognize the importance to Sterling Heights and what they bring to the table. The river is not owned by any one livery company or any canoe and kayak company. They are one that does operate. They're based in our area. There's a number of other companies that have used the river before, that are based more out of Oakland County, and, and some will continue to use our, our river as well. But they have been the ones who are locally based, who have used the river probably more than anybody else and, and continue to run expeditions. We use that company for nature center events. We've used it for citywide paddle events. The county is using them for their paddle event that's coming up here in the next couple of weeks. So, they're reputable. They've been in business for a long time and probably know the river better than anybody else that I can think of.
Okay. And with regard to the changes that are being made, what can we do or will we do to make sure that the residents know, whether on our website or signage at the park, or is there going to be signage that indicates, you know, that you have to get your car out of there by 7:00 so that we don't end up in a situation with cars being locked in? Is there going to be public information available so that people, whether on the river or off the river, know what they're entitled to?
Yes. We are going to be, we, we've already updated the website based on the information that we knew as of yesterday, so we need to update that again, which will be done here in the next, next day. I'll be working with Community Relations to do that, as well as putting out social media blasts and making sure we put some good public information out. We'll be working with Clinton River Canoe and Kayak to work on signage, work on, wording on signage to make sure it's consistent with what it is that we know about this arrangement, so that way, we are sharing a consistent message across all medium.
Okay, very good. Council, anyone else, anything? Thank you very much. We appreciate your update, Mr. Langloy.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of the 17th recipient of a Sterling Heights Fire Department Survival Coin. We have a presentation tonight from our Assistant Fire Chief, Ed Miller. Chief Miller?
Mayor Taylor, Members of Council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Honored to present, present to you tonight the 17th recipient of a Survival Coin. Survival Coin is, signifies this chain of survival. The American Health Heart Association specifies is the, the way that we can help people the best. And it talks about early recognition of symptoms, getting people to help early, contacting EMS, early CPR, advanced life, life support, and then getting to the hospital for definitive care. All that took place this time. It fits that survival chain. On May 29th, 2019, a 911 call was received by Macomb County Sheriff's Department from Mrs. Paulus, who is actually in the audience tonight, and we're going to praise her a little bit, too, for her actions. But she was requesting medical aid for her husband, who was experiencing agonal breathing and required CPR. With the help of our dispatcher, Kristen Kohler, who is here tonight to represent Sheriff's Department, and some prompting, Mrs. Paulus began CPR immediately and, along with giving some very important information to dispatcher Kohler. Dispatcher Kohler did an awesome job on this. She gathered good information. She passed it along to her coworkers, and we were en route, and from the time of the initial call to when we were on scene was 3 minutes and 51 seconds. So, it may have seemed like a long time to Mrs. Paulus as she was doing CPR on her husband. That well exceeds national standards for an incident of this type. So, again, early recognition, early notification, early CPR, the chain kept on going. The efficiency of the dispatchers were vital in this chain of survival, too. Listening to the call was really good to hear and how well they worked together. The other chain of survival was that Mrs. Paulus recognized the symptoms, and she knew how to do CPR, and she wasn't afraid to do it. So, that's, that's really good. We don't get that very often, and the dispatchers can tell you that a lot of times you have to talk people through it. CPR wasn't continued until Sterling Heights Engine 3 showed up. Lieutenant Wellhausen's here tonight. His fire equipment operator, Shawn Watson's here. Firefighter Ruffinus was on the engine, and then firefighter Gross and firefighter Campbell were on the ambulance that arrived initially, followed up by fire equipment operator Ryan Glick and Lieutenant Feeney, who is not here tonight. Through the course of their treatment, they continued high-performance CPR. They provided advanced airway. They provided medication and defibrillated three times, and they had return of spontaneous circulation. We say that often, but from the time of call to return of spontaneous circulation was 20 minutes. It was very fast. So, the efforts for everybody worked really well. And then, after that, they didn't stop their treatment. They did a 12 lead EKG, and they recognized that there was more stuff going on that needed to be addressed by the hospital. They quickly recognized that. They sent the information to the hospital, so that the hospital had time to prepare their staff, which is another vital component of that chain of survival. So, this 20 minutes of chaos ended up with Mr. Paulus being delivered to the hospital within 33 minutes of the incident being called to 911. And that quick action started with Mrs. Paulus. The professionalism of the dispatchers, our dispatcher's hiding back there. It's here. And it's not just Kristen. It's, it's all the dispatchers. They do a great job. And our people that showed up on scene. It's their training, their instincts that do well. Mr. Paulus showed up at the fire station, I think it was four days, one week later. He surprised me, too. I thought it was from a, a time past. He looked great, felt great, and he looks great today. So, we're happy to invite him up here to receive the coin. Lieutenant Wellhausen is going to present it to him.
Well, as I told Deputy Chief, from one civil service to a worker to another, I work for the city of Livonia, Facility Maintenance Foreman. I work close with our fire and our police department, and I just, again, thank you very much and for the professionalism that you show.
We have to let Mrs. Paulus-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Please.
I just wanted to totally say thank you to everyone. Your quick actions, your quick actions saved my husband's life. It was, it was, everybody was great. Everybody was wonderful. And the work you do every day, I have such respect for you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Chief Miller. And I'll open it up to Councilors. Anyone who wants to make any comments? Mrs. Sarowski?
I've said this before. I'm sure the people who watch regularly and are here, they know. I'm a nurse, and I was a triage nurse. After I was a triage nurse for Beaumont Home Care for 20 years. I did a lot of what Kristen has done, a lot of talking people through. But Mrs. Paulus, you, you did a great job. Sandy, you did a wonderful job. There, it is very rare that somebody has actually taken the time to be trained in CPR. You certainly never expect to use it on your loved ones, but if you need to, it's the best thing to know. So, kudos to you and congratulations. You married a good wa, good woman there, Mr. Paulus. She got you through this. Yeah. And again, thank you to our dispatcher, Kristen, and all of the dispatchers. You guys are wonderful, and you help people make sure that we can save, you can save those lives. So, thank you again. Good job.
Council, anyone else? Mr. Yanez?
I, I'd like to support what Councilwoman Sarowski just said. You know, that, first of all, Mr. Paulus, you should be slipping that Survival Coin under your wife's pillow tonight. I bet you, and she's going to look at you for a long time. And, and I think that's a good thing, right? So, in, in every, every successful EMS or 911 emergency call starts with the clear thinking of a really good dispatcher, every single time. And it's so important that we have good, qualified, and dedicated dispatchers starting these emergency calls. And I just, Chief Miller, I just, just to remind us, the, the national standard for having ALS, ALS on scene, isn't it eight to 10 minutes? And we had ALS on scene in three and a half minutes? That's the, that's the kind of, that's the kind of work that the people of the city of Sterling Heights get with this great fire department. I'm proud to have been a part of that, and it has a great legacy, and these guys are, are phenomenal people. And I just want to congratulate each and every one of you.
Anyone else, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Koski?
I wonder if we could have the dispatcher stand up so that we could give her a round of applause for the great job that she just did.
Anyone else? In closing on this, on this, I will say thank you, Assistant Chief Miller, for the presentation today. Mrs. Paulus, thank you for your quick action. Mr. Paulus, we're glad to have you here, as I'm sure you are glad to be here. I, 3 minutes and 51 seconds, this might seem bizarre, but I think back to when I was in high school, we had four minutes between the bells, and how many times did I walk into class late having four minutes? And you're telling me that you call 911, you get dispatched, you've got advanced life support, and you're administering lifesaving medication and treatment to a patient in less time than it took me to go from one class to the other in high school. It is truly impressive what we do here in the city of Sterling Heights, and the, the credit entirely belongs with the dedicated men and women of our fire department, dispatchers, the train, the people who train them, everybody who works on behalf of our fire department, our police department, our first responders, our dispatchers. You guys do one heck of a tremendous job, and we're truly indebted to you. We're lucky to have the professional departments that we have, and I don't know where we would be without, you know, without the fine people that, that work in those departments. So, thank you for your presence here tonight. We truly do appreciate it, and I appreciate you being part of this ceremony. God bless you and your wife, and especially your wife for, for saving you and working quickly. Thank you from the dispatcher, to the fire department, to the police department, to the hospital, to all the workers who, who made this possible. One more big round of applause. With that, good news out of the way. We're going to call you back up, Chief, and we've got some swearing-ins to do.
It's not, it's a special event for you guys. Not, it's hard to top the Paulus family, but we want to introduce you guys to the fire department. The Sterling Heights Fire Department were, was able to hire four people for replacements of retirements and vacancies that have occurred. And tonight, we're going to introduce them to you. Firefighter Jacob White, Henry Shushard, Justin Segal, and Greg Smith started yesterday at Sterling Heights Fire Department. All were hired to fill vacancies of budgeted positions that have occurred over the past year. Although these four hirings don't bring us up to our full budgeted staff, you know, they, they are the, the top of the current list, and we hope that we can get some more people through this hiring process. That's sort of cumbersome at times. All of our hired, new hires are required to have firefighter one and two certification, paramedic, nationally-registered paramedic, advanced cardiac life support when they come to us, as well as a nationally-registered, registered and nationally-recognized physical fitness or physical agility test. These four firefighters have done that part. That's the first step. Now, they start into the next two weeks of orientation, where they learn about the Sterling Heights Fire Department and what's our expectations of them. And after that, they'll go into a full year of a probationary period where they'll learn to become what we, our citizens expect of us. So, they have a lot of work ahead of them. So, I'd like to introduce Jacob White. Yeah, I did say your last name right. I'm sorry. Jacob White's a 25-year-old who's a lifelong resident of Macomb County. He comes to us from MedStar Ambulance, where he worked as a paramedic. He did his paramedic training with MedStar and also graduated from Macomb's Fire Academy in 2019. So, he's here tonight with his wife. Okay, there you are. Sorry. Let's see it first. So, Jacob. And then, our next one is Henry Shushard. Henry Shushard is a very motivated person, and I hope he keeps that motivation up. 21 years old. He's been with the Bruce Township Fire Department for three years, so he knew what he wanted to do when he got out of school. He went through superior medical education to get his paramedic training and through Northeast Oakland Fire Authority Academy. So, to get those certifications in such a quick time is really good for him. Tonight, he's here with his girlfriend, Michaela, and his father, Henry. Justin, let me get this right. Justin Segal. I didn't want to mix your name up. I'm sorry. Unfortunately, I had to sit next to me at lunch today, so his ears are still a little red, but that's all right. He grew up in Oakland County. He comes to Macomb County. He attended Birmingham Groves High School and received his paramedic training through Genesis EMS Academy and through Lansing Community College through his fire academy. So, we're trying to grab people from all over the state. Oh, can you stand up, please, as I say it? Thank you. Justin worked for Livingston County EMS, and he's also worked at Brighton Fire Authority and, most recently, Madison Heights Fire Department. And they only got him for two months. Now, we get to keep him hopefully for 25 years. So, we appreciate him coming to Sterling Heights. And then, finally, Gregory, Gregory Smith. You have some experience, too. He comes from Detroit Fire EMS Division. For eight years, he's worked there. He grew up in Gross Point, and he attended Macomb Community College, where he has associate's degree, and also went through Macomb's EMS program and their fire academy. So, tonight, we have four individuals with a wide variety of experience, both in age and experience from their previous jobs, and all will benefit us very well for the future. So, with that, we'll do the swearing-in, and I have a big copy, so. Raise your right hand. You can get to repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Jacob Segal.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter?
The Sterling Heights City Charter.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department?
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And will discharge my duties of the office to the best of my abilities.
And will discharge my duties of the office to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, guys.
Council, if you'll join me down in welcoming these gentlemen.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Ladies.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks for being with us.
Glad to be here.
Okay, before you guys leave, I'll just ask my colleagues if there's anything they want to say to these four new firefighters. Mr. Yanez?
This is a great job, guys. Don't screw it up.
Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Welcome, gentlemen. I'm sure you're well aware, we have a very high standard of fire service here in Sterling Heights. You got to listen to a Survival Coin program that we're very proud of here. I'm sure you're going to make an impact over the next 25 years. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, I think this is a great place to make your home, too. I think you really should think about it, because I think that you're never going to find a better fire department, a better police department than we have here in Sterling Heights. So, welcome. Do a great job, okay? Thank you so much.
Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski?
And I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments, but also, it is, it is truly a great community, and we, but we hold you to high standards, and we expect- And we, but we hold you to high standards, and we expect good things from you, and we know that you will deliver, because you've had the experience, you have the vision. And as somebody who is, you know, now that you are the first line of defense for a lot of these lives, we are going to be, uh, happy to see how well you will do. So, thank you for being here.
Anyone else, counsel? Uh, thank you for joining the Sterling Heights Fire Department and for committing yourselves and your lives to public service and to serving, uh, these residents that we, that, that call Sterling Heights home. Uh, we appreciate it. We appreciate your service to our community. To echo, uh, Mr. Yanez's sentiments, I think the only way you could screw this up is by leaving this great job that you have and going into politics. I second that. I think you would agree with me probably. Best of, best of luck, yeah.
Did you get a chance to address us?
Oh, yeah, you know what? They haven't. That's the one thing, uh, if, if you guys have anything you'd like to say to us, like to say to your family, like to say, um, to the residents out there, your floor is yours, going once.
Start at that end.
Now she's telling you.
Give us your name.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Your name?
My name's Henry Shushard. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, and we're happy to be here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Third, what he said. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, and I hope to serve Sterling Heights well. Thank you.
Oh, good. If that's it, I will, uh, say, chief, you can, uh, dismiss these guys out to their family and, uh, celebrate and do whatever you do tonight, and thank you again. One more big round of applause. All right. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to adopt an ordinance, as amended, to amend Chapter Two of the City Code of Ordinances to create a youth advisory board. We have a presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault. Mr. Denault?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me tonight. Sorry I couldn't be with you for the introduction of the ordinance, uh, due to a loss in our family, but I'm happy to be here with you this evening, uh, to go through the, uh, changes we've made since the feedback we received from council at the last meeting, and then obviously answer any questions and, uh, background information council may wish to, uh, to ask of me. Uh, we made three substantive changes, uh, from the version that was introduced at the last meeting to the creation of a youth advisory board. Uh, the membership has been modified, uh, from the initial proposal of 15 members to a total, uh, total membership of 20 members, if there are 20 willing to serve and appointed by council. Uh, the second modification made in this version, uh, the original had a suggested 3.0 grade point average as a standard for, uh, applications and appointment. We have modified that to a 2.5 grade point average, based on feedback from the last meeting. And, uh, the final change was a quorum requirement. Uh, we modified that because of the adjustment in the number, just in case we don't get enough, uh, at first, or at any time in its existence. Uh, the quorum to have an official meeting would now be one-third of all of the members that are actually appointed and serving, not one-third of the 20. So, in other words, if there are only 15 at any given time serving, uh, they would only need five, uh, if they were able to get together that night to hold of, an official meeting, to create official minutes. Doesn't mean they would supersede the other requirements that we have in there for making formal recommendations to council. That would still require a two-thirds vote, and, um, asking for funding for a particular event or program, uh, would require a majority vote. But the, uh, quorum would at least allow them to have an official meeting and do official work on their projects and the other initiatives that they're working on. So, uh, with that, I don't have anything else to add to the ordinance as far as changes, and I'm certainly here for questions and feedback.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Uh, Mrs. Saroski.
Resolved to adopt, as amended, the ordinance amending Chapter Two of the City Code to create a youth advisory board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Saroski?
No, I think it's, uh, just a little bit. I do have a little something to say. I think that this is a great idea. There are so many young people that do want to become involved, and, and they finally feel that they have a voice. We need to give them that opportunity to use it appropriately, and to use it that would help us and our community. So, I think this is a great idea. I know that we've had this in the past. I'm glad to see it's been, uh, resurrected, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say for us.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Uh, Mrs. Zarco, anything? Counsel, any other comments on the youth?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to Mr. Denault. This is a great program. Uh, I like the ordinance, the way it's written. Can you give us, uh, or I should say, give the audience at home, uh, a brief understanding of how this is going to work, when it's going to be ready, uh, who the children will be applying to? Uh, will there be a budget set up? Will they be allowed to attend maybe, uh, to, uh, youth? Go with the mayor to a conference, a mayor's conference, or maybe to, um, MML conference? Any incentive to get them to apply?
I'm happy to try to answer all of those, if I may. Um, uh, first of all, I think, uh, Mrs. Kosky, you're sort of creating their very first agenda for them already. Uh, they should take notes, uh, when they apply from this meeting. Uh, certainly, those are all things they should look into, in terms of what they think is important and what they should ask all of you for. Uh, whether it's a budgetary adjustment to allow them to attend a conference of some kind, uh, whether it's funding for a particular program or initiative that they think is of value to learning or helping advise you on what initiatives they think would be great for the city of Sterling Heights. Um, for the members at home, uh, that may have missed the first meeting as to what this actually is, uh, this is an advisory board. It's meant to be, uh, a board that every, um, young person in the community, uh, from freshman-level high school through, uh, up to the age of 19, no later, um, could be a part of this board and contribute to a study of youth initiative programs, a study of issues that are of interest to youth in the community, um, things, uh, initiatives and incentives that they'd like to see for youth to be more involved, whether it's in politics, whether it's in governance, whether it's in, uh, new projects, whether it's in recreation. Um, all of those things are certainly on the table, and there's really no subject that would be off limits for this board to consider and talk about, and then prepare a recommendation for the council. And the goal is to have, uh, this up and running, uh, really soon. Uh, we'll be working with community relations and city management to make sure that happens and get the protocols in place for doing that. Uh, there will be an application process that will be reviewed, and if we get a great amount of, uh, initiative and interest, uh, we'll have up to 20 appointments for the city council to look at, uh, and, and be recommended. Um, following that, they'll have, uh, the first year of their existence is supposed, it's supposed to be designed for them to create a three-year plan to present to you next May, June, July, somewhere in that timeframe. Um, these are one-year appointments, that if a senior applies, they're not there for three years. But if a freshman applies, they can be reappointed. There's no term limits on this if council, uh, feels it's warranted to reappoint somebody, uh, for the duration of their time in school. Um, there are no limits in terms of whether they're a public school student, private school, homeschool. Uh, any, any youth of the community are welcome to apply under this ordinance. Uh, and I think that maybe covers most of what you asked.
Who do they apply to?
Uh, they will apply to, uh, community relations, and that will be the application process. And then, uh, community relations and the city management will set up an app, a review, uh, study to review all of the applications that come in.
How will they know when applications will be accepted?
That will be something we'll work with community relations on, but obviously a media blitz in terms of putting out the word to all of the school districts as they come back into session. Uh, most of the administration is coming back this month, so this is the perfect time to get it on their radar. Uh, they'll have their professional development with teachers, uh, right around the last week of August. And then the kids will be back in school, um, after Labor Day, but hopefully by then, we'll have already gotten the word out and gotten the interest levels, uh, submitted to the city. And then obviously, you know, websites and, and city, uh, channel, public channels, you know, all of those other mechanisms will be explored as well.
Great job. I like it.
Thanks. It's modeled after a lot of, uh, initiatives in other states, but you don't see it too much in Michigan, so it's very unique. And Sterling Heights, as you always, always, we're leading the way, so.
Mrs. Zarco.
Oh, uh, through the chair to Mr. Denault. Um, I just have a question. Is why, for this particular commission, will the applicants be applying to community relations rather than the city clerk? What's the reasoning behind that?
You know, we, we looked at that. It's a great question, Mrs. Zarco. Um, we looked at the, uh, possibility of having it go through city clerk, and then we thought more about it, and ultimately felt that because it involves such interaction and dynamics with the community, in, in terms of getting community feedback, community input from the, uh, younger people in the community, it seemed to make sense to us to recommend and to administration to recommend that it go through community relations. Um, city clerk deals with so many formalities, you know, licensing of so many things. It just didn't seem like it was the right fit for that department in talking with all of city administration about where it belonged. So, that was sort of the thought that went into that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Yanez?
Uh, Mr., through the chair to Mr. Denault. Uh, do we know who from the city's gonna be their advisor?
Uh, well, right now, it's set, it's set as the, um, community relations director, I believe is how we worded it in here. And then obviously anybody on their behalf, uh, designate, for example, of that department, if, if the community relations director is not able or available to be there. But that's who will designate the advisor and staff liaison. So, uh, that person will coordinate, and certainly if other, other city administration is needed for a specific project or specific night, uh, they can coordinate who that would be. But that's supposed to be their point of contact for all of them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Denault, uh, for helping develop this, uh, this program. I'm certainly very excited about it. Uh, I think it's gonna be great. I, I had extensive comments at the last meeting, and I won't repeat those, but I, uh, certainly am going to be paying very close attention to this board and hope that it produces, uh, a lot of great results and, and helps, um, encourage civic engagement amongst our youngest, uh, population or our younger population. Uh, Mrs. Kosky referred to them as children. I'd say youths.
Youths?
Not... My kids are children. They don't belong on this board. Uh, but, uh, the high school students, I think this is, should be a very, uh, popular, uh, board, hopefully, and, uh, looking very much forward to it. So, thank you, Mr. Denault. With no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPE Technical Office Employees Union. Presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, mayor. As city council may know, the, uh, current budget for the year that we're in contemplated the creation of a new job classification within the Office of Assessing, known as the Assessing Coordinator. The new job classification was proposed in the budget for the following reasons. First, the creation of the Assessing Coordinator job classification will facilitate an orderly and effective succession plan that is needed to accommodate the retirement of three key employees in the Office of Assessing within the next four years. And as city council knows, in the community, uh, we have developed a very, uh, robust, uh, meaningful succession plan that we've been working on for many years, and, and this is really an offshoot of that plan. Is, is anticipated that the new job classification will be filled internally and allow for promotional opportunities for existing personnel. The movement of personnel into more complex and challenging job classifications will prepare them for future leadership roles within the Office of Assessing. In addition, the new Assessing Coordinator will be su- assuming a second-in-command position in the Assessing Office, uh, which is something that we've had a need for, for many years, and we've been slowly trying to, uh, develop this structure in other areas as well. The Assessing Coordinator will have more clearly-defined supervisory oversight of staff and can perform the duties of the city assessor, uh, in their absence. And second, since 2012, the State Tax Commission, better known as the STC, has required that all assessing personnel be certified at the appropriate level for the type of work they are performing. The STC guidelines are set forth in the Audit of Minimum Assessing Requirements, better known as AMAR. With the creation of the new Assessing Coordinator classification, the job duties within the Office of Assessing will be realigned to ensure there is conformity with AMAR. Essential job functions for the Assessing Coordinator include, but are now limited to the following: assist the city assessor in planning, coordinating, and directing the appraisal and assessments of real and personal property; evaluate the work of subordinate employees regarding the appraisal of commercial, residential, and personal property; process all real property exemption applications; determine the true cash value and establish assessments of all industrial property; assist the assessor in the defense of commercial industrial property evaluation appeals; coordinate with vendors for the printing and mailing of property assessments; assist the city assessor with coordination preparation for the Board of Review meetings, and there's two of those every year; supervise, uh, subordinates in the city assessor's absence. In order to create this position, uh, job classification within the current collective bargaining agreement, a memorandum of understanding had to be negotiated with the MAPE Technical Office Employees Union. These negotiations produce the memorandum of, uh, understanding before you this evening, and it's expected that we would, uh, fill the position, um, certainly by the end of the year, hopefully, um, by the end of September, actually. Uh, so with all this in mind, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve the MOU that's before you this evening. And, and I did want to recognize the good work of, of the union board in negotiating the MOU, and also our, um, HR benefits coordinator manager, Kate Baldwin, who's with us this evening. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the MAPE Technical Office Employees Union, creating the Assessing Coordinator's job classification, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Um, thank you, Mayor Taylor, but I think that Mr. Vanderpoel certainly explained it to all of us, and, um, I, I'm just glad we're gonna have another person, um, working in city hall.
All right. Uh, Mrs. Saroski, counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, I believe we have, uh, four nominees that are subject to appointment tonight. Uh, we'll, we'll take, I believe we have to take them one by one as they're all different, technically different appointments. So, we have four suggested actions. Is there anyone who'd like to make the first, which is to appoint James Mandl to the, to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Resolve to appoint James, James Mandl to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One, to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next is Justin Smith to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One alternate. Counsel, who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Justin Smith to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One alternate, to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. To the Board of Ordinance Appeals Two, we have Roman Stojalowski. Uh, who would like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Roman Stoj- Stojalowski to the Board of Ordinance Appeals Two, to a term ending June 30th, 2020, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
So, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And finally, we have Mr. Benjamin McMartin to, uh, BOA Appeal, Board of Ordinance Appeals Two, alternate. Who'd like to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Benjamin, uh, McMartin to the Board of Ordinance Appeals Two, alternate, to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on now to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Rosie Fessler. I live in Amanda in Sterling Heights, and I've been a resident for over 40 years. I have some issues with my own property, but I believe some of this applies to other citizens. And since I just got the book today, I would like you to add something to this in a future publication. The two things I'm going to read are, one, a police report, and two, a violation notice. The police report reads as such. On 6/14/2019, the unit responded to a report of a contractor at said property to, to collect debt for services rendered. Upon arrival, units made contact with complainant resident Rose Fessler. Rose stated she hired a contract company, a concrete company, to install a handicap-friendly sidewalk leading to her front porch. She advised she was not content with the services... She advised she was not content with the services and no longer wanted the contractor to work on her property. Rose also advised she paid with a check from a credit card company, and the person, they blocked out his name, so I don't even know who he is, told me that he accidentally damaged the check. She was advised she was not willing to give him a second check. I have no proof that the check was damaged. He just told me that. I said, "Give me the remnants, something, to show me the check was destroyed." Nothing. I made contact via phone initially with the contractor. He stated his name, and his coworker had accidentally washed his jeans with the check in the pocket. He attempted to get a new check from me with no success, but he agreed to stay away from my property and go through small claims court in order to receive compensation for his services. I had already given him a check for almost $700 for the actual cement. The check I did give him in addition was $2,700. She was advised to call 911 if he returned to the property again. He has not returned to my property, but the cement is all wrong. I called the building department. They came out and told me all the things that were wrong with it. On July 23rd, I got a notice of violation that says "final violation." It's the first one I ever received. Reads as such. "Our recent inspection has indicated that the above address is not in compliance with the following Sterling Heights codes and ordinances. Concrete, no permit is required," pardon me, no permit, permit is required for driveway concrete. It was not the driveway, it was the sidewalk. Please apply for the building permit within seven days, City Code 11-21. Please correct the items as noted, or contact me within seven days." I contacted him the next day. I was going away on vacation. I said, "Call me on my cellphone anytime. Let me know what's going on. I want this issue resolved." He didn't call me. When I got back yesterday, I called him, he didn't call me back. Some other gentleman, who was putting sod on my porch, got in on my lawn, went and took the information today, and he talked to him, but he won't talk to me. So, he finally called me this afternoon and said, "I'm going to give you another two weeks." That means I'm going through hell for another two weeks. Follow-up inspections are $62 each. Case referred to ordinance board of appeals is $225. City contractor bringing the property into compliance is cost plus 25% administrative fee. Thank you for your cooperation. I have no idea what I'm supposed to do. I am trying to be in compliance with the city, and I got this book. There is not a word in here that people have to get a permit. All the work I have done in my house for 20 years, one of them got a permit. Citizens don't know that they have to have a permit.
Okay, Ms. Fessler. Unfortunately, your time is up, but I see our city manager taking notes. If you want to leave your phone number, I think we probably have it, but if you want to leave, do you have the number? Mr. Vanderpoel will get in contact with you tomorrow, or somebody from his office will to straighten it out and make sure that you understand what needs to be done, and we'll take care of it, okay?
I have just a real quick issue.
No, I'm sorry.
Three people have asked me why there's no election today.
Okay.
Go and talk about that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fessler. Who'd like to be next under communications from citizens? Mr. Shea?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council, city administration for the National Night Out night and the Sterling Heights Police Department. What a fantastic event, and all the wonderful sponsors that have came out to support that. It's a great asset for the community where they can meet the men and women of the police department and even the fire department, and it's a, thanks for, keep doing it in August. It's fantastic. I know it's a nationwide event, and it's unfortunate what's happening across this country with police officers, and this way they can get to meet the community officers, so I want to say once again, thank you. I was in the northwest quadrant checking out to see where the trail was going to go, and I've noticed many of the trees are marked with numbers. I'd like to know what the numbers mean. Are they going to be saved? Are they going to be taken out? There were some large trees that were marked, and I would like to find, I heard that it may be happening in a couple of weeks that they're going to start. I walked the whole thing to see where it went, and I'd just like to know how it's going to go or what's going to happen. I've seen some markings and stuff. Did the contractor do that, or did the city mark the trees? Or I don't know who's in the process of being out there marking them, so. And I liked the trail. I just wanted to see how it was going to work, and it's good, it's interesting how some of the houses, what they done on city property. I was really kind of surprised in everything, the stuff they dumped in the woods and all kinds of other stuff they've done through the years. So, they pretty much got away with a lot, so they should be pretty fortunate that nothing's happened to them, so. Next topic, I want to know when the ribbon cutting is going to happen in the library for the children's garden, the new addition. I heard it was August 20th. If not, if it's not August 20th, can you give the date and the time? I think it's a fantastic addition to the children's garden. And next topic, I want to thank council, Mayor Protem, Liz Swodowsky, and Councilman Michael Rackey for talking to me. I called Mayor Protem. She was at work, and I thank you for taking the time regarding the memorial in the parking structure for Officer Sawyer. I've, you know, I go around taking pictures and stuff, and I went back to the memorial, and the memorial was in pretty bad shape. It was pretty dirty and stuff and everything, and I was really kind of surprised. And I want to thank them for taking the time explaining to me what the city's going to do. The police department, they plan on updating it once all the construction is done with the, you know, city complex. I'm glad you're going to do that and take care of it. I really appreciate that. But one thing I want to thank is Megan Arns from Special Project Coordinator and Jarrett Bovian, Facilities Maintenance. They came together, I called them, just explained to them, I wasn't expecting this. They came together, got a team together, and they went out there and cleaned it, the memorial, got all the dirt off and everything, and it still needs to be repainted, but they said it's going to be done once everything's done. But I just want to thank them, everyone from the city, to go above, beyond the efforts to do that, because I personally feel that he needs to be remembered, and whatever you guys do, I hope the memorial is either in a public place or keep the parking spot the way it is, but just repaint the mural. But I was really impressed when Megan called me and told me they did that last Friday. I was, it's like, I like a community that cares. I really appreciate that, so thank you for that. And in closing, I want to, I'm in favor of the renewal for the Safe Streets, renewal for police roads and fire. It's a great asset for the community. It's worth it. It's worth a yes vote. And the only question I have, because you're going to have questions regarding this, how much has the city budgeted for the campaign to get this passed? I'm for it. I'd just like to know what was budgeted for it, so you can let the residents know, so. But it's a great campaign. It's going to help the community, so vote yes in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else? The whole crowd? Jerry, you? No? Okay. We'll start with you, sir. You can come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm John Matthews. I live on Maple Crest, just off of Dequinder by 15 Mile. I got two things I want to talk about tonight, and although they are related to items on the agenda, they are not the items on the agenda. The first is about when the firefighters were up here, and Mayor Taylor said, "We were lucky to have them." I agree with the sentiment, I think, there, but the diction, not 100%. I think there's some element of luck, but Sterling Heights is a wonderful community, and I think that really goes a long way, and it's not luck that brings us to having a good community. Councilman Radke said it was a good home. Ms. Sarowski said the word "community" to describe it, and I think you get those things based on decisions people make. It's not happenstance. And one of the decisions that we have coming up here is that Safe Streets renewal, and that really is something I think the voters should take a look at. And to the city's credit, in the fall issue, I believe it is, of the Sterling Heights Magazine, there's a lot of good information in there that I would really recommend people look at. It's displayed very clearly. It is a wonderful thing. And to the gentleman who was just up here, I think that is one great way that people can learn more about it, and I hope they do. I really hope they take a look at that magazine to clarify exactly what the Safe Streets renewal is and is not, because I think a lot of people could learn quite a bit by looking at that. So, good job on that. Another thing that I think is very positive is I did not know anything about the citizens or the youth advisory committee, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, where I'm assuming it was discussed, that is such a wonderful opportunity you've put together for students. I'm a teacher by trade. I was at a workshop earlier today, and one of the things we're talking about is youth engagement, how you get kids motivated and to care about the world. A majority right now, studies have shown of millennials and post-millennials have this very dystopian view of government just as a whole, just the world in general, really. But if you ask them questions about government, they say, "Well, there's nothing I can do." They feel there's no way they can affect change. They can't get involved. It's beyond them. There's nothing they can do to help, and you can change that perception by putting this together, and I'm really, really, really happy that you did that. And it's such a great opportunity, because students oftentimes feel like their life, you know, isn't related to their school subjects. Well, I can sit them down, and I can say, "Well, you know, we learned about budgets today. Guess what you might be able to talk about at the youth advisory committee if you want to go in on that? What about your social studies classes? Do you think there's something you can apply there?" And you've given them that connection, and those connections are what allow them to go forward and to see how those things are related and maybe go into other careers, maybe into law or into finance or something like that. You've opened the doors for them. And because it's not about that item that I want to talk about, here's the point I'm trying to make. If the community manager is a bit too busy to engage some of the more revved-up kids, if you are fortunate enough to have some of those on this committee, I forget the name of the gentleman who was here earlier who tangentially talked about this, it may be a very good idea to have some designee with more time to manage the expectations of those kids do that, because the one thing that is sad to see sometimes is you'll have people involved in kids' lives who just don't have the time, because they have so many other responsibilities on their plate, to extend those warm, welcoming vibes to those kids. And a lot of these students, this could be their one connection they have to something meaningful in the world, and I would really like to see that somebody is there in the city who has the time to make that happen. And I'm not suggesting it would be you, Clerk Ryska, because I'm sure you have a million things on your plate, too, but it may be something that you look at, having somebody do that. Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Early?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and residents. I'm Jasmine Early, and I want to thank you, all the staff and the volunteers who were at the Sterling Festival. It was another success. I also want to thank our city administration for respecting my rights to give constitutions to the new citizens. They really appreciate that gift. I'm really grateful for another police department night out. The people are out there, and they will be until 9:00 PM enjoying the resources that the police department is offering to them. I want to talk about, and I'm grateful, with the engineering department. Through the construction of Chelylin, I learned a lot. And I would like to ask our city administration if that is possible to add in the letter that you sent to the residents when you notify the residents that construction is going to be happening? Something that came out through the process of fixing, repairing the street, and was the driveway approaches. By an email received from the engineering department regarding questions that residents had, it says here, and I see it should be added to the letter, when the driveway, many times, okay, when reconstructing a local road, grade changes to the road needs to be made many times to ensure the new roadway drains properly. Many times, these grade changes are minor and don't affect dry approaches. However, there are instances in which the road has to be slightly raised, and existing dry approaches cannot be met. In these instances, the city will replace the dry approach at the city's cost, because it is necessary to place the proper grade on the road. Why would it be this important to let the residents know this information? So, they will not go through the hassle and frustration with the contracting company, the engineering department, making calls to the city, who is going to pay when there are several approaches that clearly need to be replaced, but they wanted to know why? If you let the residents know this information ahead of time, it saves a grief to the residents, it makes everybody happy. We, Chelylin is almost done, and residents are grateful, but there was the discussion about the approaches that are in different level than the street now. Finding out this information now is great, because we know what is the solution for that. We know who is going to pay for, and we know people should not go ahead and have them done, and without knowing if the city will pay or not. So, if you could, we will appreciate that in the future, any street that is constructed, have those notes there, say they headed for the residents, and say they headed for the city, having, calling the city clerk or the engineering department, asking those questions. It took several weeks for us to get this answer, which I really appreciate. The department was there. We had nice conversations with the residents, and the engineer did the job that he needed to do. He was courteous, respectful, and did his job. So, it's just an advice. I hope you take it in consideration for future streets. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Early. Mr. Cavalli?
Nick Cavalli, Sterling Heights, resident for 21 years. Thank you, guys, and city administration, all the volunteers, and all the city sponsors for another fantastic and successful Sterling Fest. My ears are still recovering from the Vince Neil concert. That was fantastic. That being said, you know, my one regret is that the Upton House was not ready to go for Sterling Fest this year. However, myself and a couple other members of the Historical Commission were able to get inside just before Sterling Fest, look at some of the progress that's being made, and look at some of the updates that we're going to be making to the museum, and I just wanted to say, you guys are going to be absolutely blown away with where we're going with this, and I kind of wanted to just plug it, you know? This is going to be a fantastic gem for our city, and I think that you guys are going to be really happy with the work that we're getting done. So, thank you, guys, for the amazing Sterling Fest, and we look forward to hosting you all at the Upton House when it's open.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavalli. Close that portion. Move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything?
Mayor, I can respond to a couple things quickly. First, there was a question regarding the number of trees that are marked out on the trail from Delia to the nature preserve. That, there was a tree inventory that was done, and all the trees that were in the area were inventoried and tagged. That does not mean they're being removed. There's approximately 70 or so noteworthy trees that would be removed, not counting scrub trees and, you know, kind of what you would consider scrub, I guess. We are replacing well over 200, almost 300 trees, so removing about 70 and replacing, planting almost 300 new trees, so definitely reforesting the area for sure. The ribbon cutting for the children's play area is August 20th. There'll be more information to come on that very soon. Also, there was a question regarding Safe Streets and what the budget is for the public education effort. The good news is that all the efforts are being done in-house with existing resources. For example, the public information that was provided in the Sterling Magazine was a document that we already produced. We simply allocated a portion of the magazine to the Safe Streets effort, and we're not using any external resources that require external funding of any sort for the public education effort. Mrs. Early mentioned the need to add some information to the letters that go out to the public regarding approaches and how they're impacted during road improvement projects. I think it's a very good idea. It's something we'll take a look at. The letter, as it stands right now, is very long, so maybe what we need to do is add sort of a Q and A and add that particular information to a Q and A that's attached to the letter. And I think that's it for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kaschubski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, any new business reports? Mrs. Zarco?
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to appreciate the fact that our residents pay attention to what's going on in the city and the fact that you've all thanked our employees for the great Sterling Fest, as well as the volunteers that were there. The other thing is, is bringing up Safe Streets. I know now that we're all talking about it, and I think that our residents realize how important it is, and and I think that our residents realize how important it is, and how important it will be to vote yes for this in the upcoming election in November. But as soon as we're done with that, we're gonna start talking about the census, which is just as important, because we want to make sure that everybody that lives in Sterling Heights is counted. And so, I just want you, as long as you know how important it is to thank people, how important Safe Streets is, then for sure you'll know how important the census is, and we'll be asking you to make sure that you either go online to make sure that you're counted, or maybe after April 1st, if, I probably should let Mrs. Ryska give you more information on it, but I think April 1st is the day of 2020 that we all want to be counted, but. So, Mayor Taylor, if you could let Mrs. Ryska through the chair, to, Mrs. Ryska, if you could give us some more information on the census, we'll talk about it like once a month.
Mrs. Ryska, any update you can give on that?
Yeah, so census day is April 1st, 2020, about mid-March. Every residential property in the city will receive some sort of notification, be it a postcard, an actual complete paper form census, directing you or asking you to either go online to fill out your census this year, you'll be able to do it by phone, and you'll also be able to do it by the traditional method of sending it, you know, filling it out manually and sending it in. Any residents that have not completed a census form of some sort, after April 1st, the US Census Bureau will send delegates out to our community and start knocking on doors. So, it is really important that everybody fills out their census. The city is working hard to reach out to community entities to get the word out about the census, and we also will have resources for those individuals who need them, be it the library or the new community center, to assist people in filling it out.
Thank you. And also, this is how we get a lot of our funding from the government, is by the number of people that we have living in the city. And you all know that you put, you send money to the government, you send it to Washington, we want to get some of it back, and that's the best way to do it, is to make sure that we're counted. Nothing further.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Zarko, anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of quick things. First, I want to point out to residents at home who might not have seen us go through the consent agenda so quickly, the object that I've really wanted to have happen is happening. We're gonna redo 14 Mile between Ryan and Dequinder, probably, in my opinion, one of the worst stretches of road in the city. I'm so glad it's got off the ground now, and I just wanted to point it out to the residents. I also want to bring the attention of counsel, something I realized just recently, but our meeting agendas are no longer printed in the Sterling Heights Century. I hadn't realized this until I spoke with several residents about stuff that's going on at council, and I was wondering if we could make a motion, or even consider starting to print our agendas in the Sterling Heights Century again, just so residents at home, who maybe aren't as internet savvy, who do not come by City Hall as often, can at least get a summary of what is gonna be considered at our meetings in the future. My final point is, I was hoping that at a future meeting, we could discuss, a lot of reports I see online, which I'm sure are overly worried about rodents in Sterling Heights. We're a city like any other, and we have pastures like any other, and I think that we have a very aggressive strategy to kind, you know, when we notice there are any mice or rats in the city, I want the residents to know that we fight this very strongly, so I'm hoping that Mr. Vanderpoel might be able, willing to speak about that tonight, or at a future meeting, our efforts to combat them, and how hard we work to make sure we keep a safe, clean city.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to thank the residents for a wonderful Sterling Fest. The weather cooperated, the music was wonderful. Mr. Cavalli got hit with a couple extra water balloons, it was a great event. And I, but you not only came out yourselves, but you brought a lot of people who are not city residents, and they got a taste of what Sterling Heights is all about. And I have lived here for 25 years, longer than Mr. Cavalli, sorry, bringing you up again. But it has been a great time here, and it's because of the wonderful planning of previous city management and city councils, but also because of the residents making this not just the place that they live, but the place that they are going to love and live, where they stay, they play, they may even work here, we hope that they do, we have that, hopefully, the opportunity for them. But to make, not just McCombe your home, as the saying goes, but Sterling Heights your home, and a home where you will prosper, and where my kids, my granddaughter is here right now coming in from North Carolina, and they consider this home, even my daughter-in-law. So, that says something, so thank you all. It's the residents, you guys make the city. We're just here to help get what you need accomplished, so thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski, anyone else? No? I don't think I have anything, we've heard a lot about Sterling Fest, there's not much more I can say. It was as good as it gets, it was truly phenomenal, so thank you to everybody involved, thank you for participating. And with no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support, it's been moved and supported, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming out tonight.